Doing good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, you have all nine board members.
Thank you very much. I have six o'clock. I'd like to thank everybody for meeting with us this afternoon. At this time, I will call the March eighth meeting, 2020, to order. And at this time, I will yield to Ms. Valerie Newton for roll call.
Thank you, sir. As I call your name, please indicate your attendance. Chris Clark?
Here.
Dennis Edwards?
Here.
Tim Benton?
Here.
Gary Rhoda?
Yeah.
Vincent Rosier?
Yeah.
Corey Single Terry?
Yeah.
Alan West?
Here.
Glenn McCoy?
Here.
Roger Carroll?
Here.
And Gary Grady?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have nine board members and the board attorney in attendance.
Thank you very much. At this time, I need a motion to be able to conduct this meeting tonight virtually. May I have a motion?
Start moving.
A second of the motion. I have a motion by Mr. Chris Clark. And a second by Mr. McCoy. Any discussion? I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
Thank you, sir. As I call your name, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark?
Uh.
Dennis Edwards?
Uh.
Tim Benton?
Uh.
Gary Rhoda?
Aye.
Vincent Rosier?
Aye.
Corey Single Terry?
Uh.
Alan West?
Uh.
Glenn McCoy?
Uh.
And Roger Carroll?
Uh.
Mr. Carroll, you have nine yeses.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Edwards if he'd lead us in our invocation, followed by Mr. Rosier if he'd lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Let's pray. Thank you, gentlemen, for doing that for us tonight. At this time, I need a motion to approve the night's agenda. I move, Glenn. Second of the votes. I have a motion to accept the agenda by Mr. Glenn McCoy and a second by Mr. Alan West. Any discussion or changes? I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
Thank you, sir. As I call your name, board member, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark?
Uh.
Dennis Edwards?
Uh.
Tim Benton?
Uh.
Gary Rhoda?
Aye.
Vincent Rosier?
Aye.
Corey Single Terry?
Uh.
Alan West?
Aye.
Glenn McCoy?
Uh.
Roger Carroll?
Uh.
Mr. Chairman, you have nine yeses.
Thank you very much. At this time, I need a motion to approve the minutes for the and if the board would not have any objections, I'd like to do them all for the February eighth regular meeting, February the sixteenth, February the twenty-second, and March the first special call meetings. If the board would allow me to combine all four of those minutes, may I have a motion? Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve- Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. McCoy.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve all the meetings that we, all the special call meetings that we-
Second of the motion. I have a motion by Mr. McCoy to approve the minutes as stated and a second by Mr. Rosier. Any discussion? I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
Thank you. As I call your name, board members, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark?
Uh.
Dennis Edwards?
Uh.
Tim Benton?
Uh.
Gary Rhoda?
Aye.
Vincent Rosier?
Aye.
Corey Single Terry? Mr. Single Terry?
Nay.
Alan West?
Aye.
Glenn McCoy?
Uh.
Roger Carroll?
Uh.
Mr. Chairman, you have eight yeses and one no.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move to spotlight and recognition. Turn it over to Dr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. This time I recognize Ms. Valerie Newton as she shares proclamation for school on two road and school social proclamation.
Thank you, Dr. Atkinson. Board members, if you will, please forgive me. In looking at the proclamation for school on two road day, I inadvertently read that as March, when actually it is in May. So if will, we will take that off for tonight, but I will be bringing that back to you in for us to have as our- We do, however, have the resolution for school social worker month. This comes from the state of North Carolina, from Roy Cooper, the governor, and it is for Social Work Month 2021 by the governor of the state of North Carolina. Whereas, the social work profession has worked for generations to strengthen the well-being and meet the basic needs of all people, especially those who are vulnerable, oppressed, and/or living in poverty. And whereas, the social work profession is a diverse profession that allows people of every generation, ethnicity, sexual identity, and religious background to make an immediate positive impact on our state and nation. And whereas, social workers elevate and empower people, giving them the ability to solve problems, cope with personal roadblocks, and acquire the resources they need to succeed. And whereas, the social work profession is one of the fastest-growing professional industries in the United States, with nearly 800,000 people expected to be employed as social workers by 2028. And whereas, social workers are active in governate schools, universities, social service agencies, communities, corporations, the military, and health and mental health care settings across North Carolina. And whereas, social workers have played a crucial role in our institutions with COVID-19, helping individuals, families, and communities cope with the wide-ranging effects of the pandemic. And whereas, this year's school social work month theme, "Social Workers Are Essential", embodies the heroic contributions of the social work profession to our nation, including the work social workers have done to heal our nation during this turbulent and uncertain times. And whereas, for those, social workers have advocated rights for people of all races, genders, ethnicities, cultures, abilities, socio-economic backgrounds, religions, and sexualities. And whereas, the social work profession has contributed to advancements in our society over the past century, including voting rights, improved workplace safety, minimum wage, and social safety net programs that help to ameliorate poverty and hunger. And whereas, the state of North Carolina commends social workers throughout our state and nation for their contributions to our communities and for their dedication to improving quality of life for all people. Now, therefore, I, Roy Cooper, Governor of the state of North Carolina, do hereby proclaim 2021 as Social Work Month in North Carolina and commend its observance to all citizens. In witness whereof, I have hereby to set my hand and affix the great seal of the state of North Carolina at the Capitol in Raleigh this 23rd day of February in the year of our Lord 2021 and of the independence of the United States of America, the 245th. And we also recognize that School Social Work Week is March the seventh through the thirteenth, 2021.
Thank you so much for that, Ms. Valerie, and we thank you for the work that our social workers do and the impact they have on our students. And a lot of time, their work is, goes unthanked, but we want to take this time to thank all our social workers for the great job that they're doing in Bladen County. At this time, Dr. Atkinson, citizen participation.
Yes, Mr. Carroll, there is one for citizen participation. I will turn it over to Ms. Newton, who will read that this time.
Thank you, sir, and I do have one that we have received, and it reads, "Good evening, board members. I am Dane Smith. My wife and I have two children currently in Bladen County Schools. We're a regular family. Charlotte and I both work full-time. We go home every afternoon and do all of the things that most families do. We ask our kids how their day was and what they learned at school. We ask if homework is complete and if they need any help. We see that they have all they need to succeed. We support our community and encourage others to do the same. We ensure that our boys are involved socially and civically in the community. The public library and parks are important to us. AJ and Paul are often seen at the gym. Paul is an avid reader, AJ an equally avid runner. We're just an average family, one that depends on public education. I envision the Board of Education as a highly invested group of people dedicated to ensuring that our children are provided with the opportunity to learn at whatever level they are capable of learning. They are a group of people diligently seeking creative ways to guide and push the local school system to provide the highest education level possible. I picture a board that seeks public input, encourages parent participation, and considers parents a great asset. A transparent board that has a great desire to always take the high road. Our children deserve elected officials that will not settle for anything less than the best, one that considers mediocrity, substandard, and has a great desire to see our children thrive, not merely survive. An education board that leads conversations at the state level and pushes back at the State Department of Instruction when things don't add up is what my hope is for our children. We need a board that seeks public opinion and takes that opinion to the state. A board that is well-respected by leaders at the state level and whose guidance is greatly valued. Unfortunately, my confidence in the current board has dramatically diminished. Since March of 2020, that the board, this board has operated in a state of fear. You have made uninformed decisions. You have discouraged public and parent comments. You have held virtual meetings in a manner that is suspect at best. The Board of Education meeting rooms are not readily available. The meetings are held on a personal account. I have personally sent several emails to each board member. Nearly all have gone unanswered. The email address for board member Benton is not even on the school board's website. There has been no positive change. Our students are struggling. Superintendent Atkinson said months ago that virtual instruction was to be as effective as in-person learning. To suggest virtual education for Bladen County students and teachers could be as effective as in-person learning is absurd. Students and teachers have been thrown into a position that is not fair to them. While the pandemic has been challenging, it offered this board an opportunity to step up outside the box and find a way to set an example of what a sound education system would like for students and teachers. This has been done in some neighboring jurisdictions. Instead, collectively, you have allowed postponed testing, curved grades, and lowered requirements. Instead of holding the state board accountable, our local board has taken the low road at each overpass. Think about the long-term consequences of your decisions and lack of diligence. Will our kids be well-prepared for college? No, they will not. Prior to COVID, were we a district that was scoring so well that we could afford to sacrifice a little? No, we were already near failing. Bladen County Schools have shown no trust in the parents of this county. Education officials have demonstrated not in words, but actions. Parents can't be trusted to feed their children. Over the past year, the Bladen County Schools has distributed more food than some counties twice our size, which says, "You know, parents are not going to provide food for their children." However, you expect those same parents to educate their children. You have rushed through the hiring of our new superintendent and have not been transparent in the process. Maybe Dr. Atkinson is the best candidate. I don't feel that any of you could say that with any certainty since no one else was considered. Truthfully, it's most likely there were several violations in his hiring. It appears that Dr. Atkinson's hire was political, and he was selected before the departure of Dr. Taylor. This board did not take the proper time or consideration in the tremendous job of hiring the next leader of our schools. Your lethargic apathy continues to grab our students and teachers. Thanks to board members, Ms. Rhoda and Mr. Single Terry, for their opposition to the substandard search for a new superintendent. We need a board that will stop complaining about charter schools and will lead in competing with them. If our children were properly educated under the traditional public school platform, there would not be a market for charter schools. The state has adopted a new social studies curriculum. Have you reviewed this? Did this board make a recommendation to the state on whether or not to accept these changes? Have you asked the parents what they thought about the new standards? Was there a public comment request on this issue? Are you committed to our children's education? There is more discussion about roots and root warranties than there is any real, meaningful, purposeful conversation on the education of and late education and of late, the lack thereof, of our children. It's most discouraging, and candidly, it's disappointing. These things have happened on your watch. In my opinion, the actions of this board are gracefully negligent. Unfortunately, these things cannot be undone. So what can be done? This board can commit to making changes now. You can stop meeting virtually, start encouraging parent participation, start asking for public input, promote transparency, hold the State Board of Education and North Carolina DPI accountable, and start making decisions based on our children's best interest. Who will make the motion that the next meeting is held in person? Quite literally, our future depends on it. Thank you for your time, Dane Smith.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Valerie, for sharing that with us. And is there any more citizen's participation?
That's all, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go to information items. Turn it over to Ms. Lanier and Ms. Brown.
Good evening, board members. I'm here to report the staff COVID data for the reporting period March first through March seventh. We have three staff currently absent due to being positive for COVID. We have eleven staff currently absent for being exposed to someone with COVID. So currently, we have fourteen staff members absent due to COVID. Good afternoon, board. I had reported from March first through March seventh of a student COVID. We have fifty-four exposed cases, four diagnosed positive cases, and seven students that showed symptoms in the group of March first through July. Their mean six grade class has been closed down for the ten-day quarantine.
Mr. Carroll, if there's any questions about the COVID-19 update, Ms. Nurse Lanier, Ms. Brown, myself will be happy to entertain those at this time.
If there's no questions, thank you for the update, Ms. Lanier and Ms. Brown. Financial summary, Ms. Harrison.
Good afternoon, board. Just wanted you to see the financial summary for the month of January or month of February. Just keep in mind that when you're looking at these summaries that our funds are usually coming in at year. So we usually get our funding afterwards, so that's why you're seeing numbers here in negative. We're running about the same way that we've run last year as far as our funding and our numbers when I compare this February to last February. So we're on target with all of that. Another item that I did want to mention to you that has just come down from DPI to us, we don't know all the details on this yet, but as effective as of July one, 2021, which is this year, the Department of Public Instruction is no longer going to support installment pay. So, and what that means is if you have teachers, ten-month employees who spread their check across twelve-month pay, and they usually get a check in June and July. We take a portion of their pay monthly, and then we write them a check in June and July. We have received notice from the finance office at DPI that they will no longer be doing this as of July first. Now, the checks for this year, the 2021 check that, or the 2021 pay, when they normally receive their installment check in June and July, will be paid. But for the new upcoming year, they are not allowed to sign in, to sign up for installment pay. Now, we do have to offer, according to general statute at this point, we do have to offer another type of installment agreement of some type. And we're in the process now with the other finance officers in the state and the, in our region, to come up with some type of program of some that we can offer to the employees. We're going to be sending some information out. As soon as I get the information, I think hopefully I'll have it on Wednesday or Thursday from DPI so that our employees will be aware of this. But we wanted you to be aware of what's coming up so that you would know if you start getting questions about that. I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison.
Thank you.
At this time, I need a motion to accept our consent agenda. I have a mo-, I have a motion by Mr. Dennis Edwards to accept our consent agenda. A second by Mr. Alan West. Any discussion?
I think that was Chris, Roger, not Dennis.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Mr. Chris Clark has a motion and a second by Mr. Alan West. Any discussion? I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
As I call your name, board members, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark?
Uh.
Dennis Edwards?
Uh.
Tim Benton?
Uh.
Gary Rhoda? Mr. Rhoda?
Aye.
Thank you. Vincent Rosier? Mr. Rosier? Welcome back.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Corey Single Terry?
Uh.
Alan West?
Uh.
Glenn McCoy?
Uh.
Roger Carroll?
Uh.
You have nine yeses, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. This time, we move to action items, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Chairman Carroll. Board members, action item 11.01 is the traditional calendar for 2122. This calendar was drafted as of January. We did have our curriculum advisory committee, which is teacher representatives from each building, as well as principals, to review this. We had to approach this a little bit different this year because we could not have our traditional calendar committee meeting as we had in the past because of COVID and limitations there. We held off from January on bringing these because we had caught information potentially coming of changes to calendar legislation. However, as of right now, those changes have been proposed on calendar legislation. It's still a possibility because they are in session this time. However, we are required by April one to provide to DPI the start and end dates for schools. So we must go ahead and adopt these calendars. So if you will look at the traditional calendar, this does follow the regular legislation. There are no remote learning days marked this time because we have not received guidance about that in terms of DPI. Last year, they allowed schools to begin one week earlier. But as of right now, there's been no changes. So we have to start the Monday closest to August 25th, which is August the 23rd on this calendar. We were able to accomplish by doing a split semester, eighty days in the first semester, one hundred in the second. This does allow us to do the exams before Christmas, which I know was a desire of the board previously as well. So I'm requesting approval tonight of the 2122 academic calendar for traditional schools.
I have a motion to accept the calendar presented by Dr. Atkinson.
Motion to approve. I approve.
I second the motion. I have a motion by Mr. Alan West to accept the calendar. A second by Mr. McCoy. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
As I call your name, board members, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark?
Uh.
Dennis Edwards?
Uh.
Tim Benton?
Aye.
Gary Rhoda?
Aye.
Thank you. Vincent Rosier?
Uh.
Corey Single Terry?
Uh.
Alan West?
Uh.
Glenn McCoy?
Uh.
Roger Carroll?
Uh.
Mr. Chairman, you have nine yeses.
Thank you very much. Early college calendar, Dr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Chairman Carroll. Board members. So you have before you the 2122 academic calendar for the early college. The early college does not have to follow regular legislation for the school calendar law. They are allowed to start early, and as to align them to the community college calendar, their calendar as well does have also one hundred and eighty days. their calendar as well does have also 180 days. The one difference in terms of spring break is the spring break is aligned to BCC spring break, so those students do not miss those class classes or in-person classes as well. So their start date for the 2122 academic year proposed is August the 16th, which aligns to the start date of Bladen Community College. And then you will see the remainder of the schedule for the most part. We tried to align as many days as possible, teacher workdays and that kind of thing, to the same as the other calendar to promote us being able to district-wide professional program. And I am requesting the board's approval tonight of the 2122 academic calendar for the early college.
We have a motion to, I have a motion by Mr. Dennis Edwards to approve the early college calendar presented. Do I have a second?
A second motion.
I have a second by Mr. Glenn McCoy. Any discussion?
Hey, Roger, Allen West. On these calendars, the year is wrong on these months. I don't know if that matters.
Mr. West, thank you so much. We did get that fixed just before the board meeting. That was a clerical error that we saw, but those had been fixed. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? I yield to you, Ms. Valerie. Thank you, Mr. West.
As I call your name, board members, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark.
Aye.
Dennis Edwards.
Aye.
Tim Benton.
Aye.
Gary Rota.
Aye.
Vincent Rosier. Cory Singletary.
Aye.
Allen West.
Aye.
Glenn McCoy.
Aye.
Roger Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, you have nine yeses.
Thank you very much. At this time, resolution for CM at risk, Dr. Raxton and Mr. Worthing.
Thank you, Chairman Carroll. Board members, you have before you a resolution approving the construction management at risk method for the building project. This, we received this resolution from Attorney Rod Malone, who the board has allowed us to bring on board to assist with this. We do have two board policies, board policy 9110 and 9115 that relate to CM at risk and the prequalification of bidders. For the board to begin the process of selecting a CM at risk, we do have to adopt the resolution first, and then, of course, the board will be able to hear those proposals and select the CM at risk. So now I'm requesting approval for the board to accept the resolution, approving the board to use the CM at risk method for the construction moving forward, and would ask the board's approval for that tonight, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Motion to approve. I have a motion to approve the resolution by Mr. Rosier. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Chris Clark. Any discussion? With no discussion, I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
As I call your name, board members, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark.
Aye.
Dennis Edwards.
Aye.
Tim Benton.
Aye.
Come back. Vincent Rosier.
Aye.
Cory Singletary.
Aye.
Allen West.
Aye.
Glenn McCoy.
Aye.
Gary Rota. Thank you, sir. Roger Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, you have nine yeses.
Thank you very much. At this time, I need a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing personnel as per NCGS 143.318.11, to consult with an attorney if needed as per NCGS 143.318.11, and to discuss the student reassignment discipline per the 1974 Family Rights and Privacy Act, and to discuss the Carter lawsuit against the Bladen County Schools. Now I have a motion. So move. Back it. I have a motion by, yes, yes, sir.
Am I the only one got this, this, this update, this, closed session stuff today?
Uh, I know I got today our addendum stuff, if that's what you're referring to.
Oh, I'm talking about all the closed session stuff. I just, I just received it today.
I don't know about anybody else.
Well, if they hear me, I guess they hear me.
Yeah, I got, I got mine.
What'd you get, Mr. West?
It was on the agenda when it first came out.
I, I thought it was on there, so.
Question, Mr. Carroll.
Sure.
We have, we have a motion on this one?
We, we do, we do.
It is legal, that's what I'm asking, Glenn. You're supposed to receive this stuff with this, with so many days or so many hours or whatever. We got our attorney here listening.
Well, I mean, I'd have to go back and look at the policy, but I believe the policy does provide that you should have your agenda within three days of the, of the date of the meeting. The board can certainly, if, if, I assume that everybody got it. I don't know when everybody got it, frankly, Gary, but the board can, by majority vote, agree to basically suspend that policy and go into closed session. I, I, I can't tell you when everybody got it, Gary.
Well, I, I know you can't, Gary. I'm just telling you when I received it. I received mine today, and I checked yesterday. I think the first time I checked this stuff was Wednesday, Thursday, Wednesday, but it was not on there.
I think I checked Friday, and it wasn't Friday, so.
Yeah, I think, I think we had it by Friday.
No. Wednesday, it wasn't on there Friday, Mr. Carroll.
I, I, I'm just saying, I got mine by Friday. I, I was going along with Mr. West. I, I don't know when you got yours.
Mr. West didn't say he got, he received his on Friday. He said it wasn't on there Friday. I think that's what he said.
Now, I, I didn't, I only checked one time, and it wasn't on there, so I don't know if it got put on later on in the day or what, so.
You've heard what our attorney has said. I have a motion and a second to go into closed session.
Hold on, Mr. Carroll. West and I are not the only two board members on, we, there are several others.
Mr. Rota, I was going to ask, did the board want to do, is exactly why the attorney said that we go into closed session canceling out the policy?
We could just cancel out policy like that?
I, I can't, I.
We don't even need to cancel it all out. Let's just, let's just do it random.
Well, we're not canceling the policy, we're laying the policy aside so we can go into closed session.
Same thing, Mr. Carroll, just different word.
I need that it's by the board.
The board chair, you, you, following here is lead, our board attorney, well, you know, he would give us the advice as to what we need to do.
Mr. Gary, do I need to have Mr. Glenn and Mr. Rosier to change their motion to amend the policy for tonight?
Let me read you the policy, okay? Each board member shall receive a copy of the proposed agenda at least three days prior to the meeting, and it will be available for public inspection at board distribution when it's distributed to the board members. At the meeting, the board, by majority vote, add an item that is not on the proposed agenda before the agenda is adopted. After the agenda is adopted, a two-thirds vote is required to add an item to the agenda. Well, the agenda has already been adopted by the board with that section on the agenda, so I think you only need to have a majority vote to add, to go into closed session, even though the board did not receive it three days ahead of time.
Mr. Grady.
Yeah.
I, I, we, I think we all received the agenda. I think what we're talking about is the personnel list that's attached to.
No, that was not.
It was not, it was not in, on the agenda.
That, that you, that you're required to see, receive prior to the board meeting. The agenda you're required to receive three days prior to the board meeting.
So the personnel list can come on Monday?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay. So, I didn't read, I didn't realize what you were talking about, Mr. Rota. I apologize.
I have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Any further discussion? I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
As I call your name, board members, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark.
Aye.
Dennis Edwards.
Aye.
Tim Benton. Gary Rota. Vincent Rosier.
Aye.
Cory Singletary. Allen West. Glenn McCoy.
Aye.
Roger Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven yeses and two nays.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes, sir.
I, I have looked back at the policy again. I do believe we need to have a majority vote. It does say three days on the proposed agenda and three days on any supporting informational materials which would assist the board members to become informed of the issues proposed to the board consideration. Now, if the board considers those, that information necessary to assist the board to become informed of what's being heard, then I do think we need to have a motion that we suspend that policy and go into closed session. I'd ask that you adopt a motion allowing that to happen, or, or not adopt it, one or the other. I'm sorry I didn't catch that earlier.
I need a, a motion by the board to amend the policy for tonight in order to carry on into closed session. I have a motion by Mr. Chris Clark to amend the policy to go into closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Tim Benton. Any discussion?
And, and as part of that motion, I would ask that you move to reopen, to go back into open session for the purpose of that motion, and then we'll have to have another motion to go into closed session, please. Can, can, I'd ask that be a part of, you amend your motion to that effect.
Mr. Chris, will you amend your motion to that part, that we go amend this motion and then go back into open session to vote to go back into closed session?
Yes, sir, I'll amend it.
Mr. Benton, do you second that amendment? Any discussion?
Mr. Carroll, I'd just like to know for the record, who, who received their, their closed session stuff on, on time?
I did a few hours. Yeah, yeah. Mr. Allen, I don't know, but somebody ought to be able to pull up when it was put on.
Right.
Does anybody know that information?
I know, I pulled, I, I, I had board docs. I pulled it up Friday. I had it on there. The only thing I did not have was personnel. I got it when I looked on there today. Could have went on earlier, but I didn't look until today to look over personnel. I mean, that's just amazing. But, any more discussion? I, I have a motion and a second on the floor to amend the motion. Any more discussion? Ms. Valerie, I, I'll yield to you.
Mr. Carroll.
Yes, sir.
Why, I mean, me personally, why would, why wouldn't we want to go into closed session when some board members didn't have time to review what was, what was, what was put into the closed session, closed session agenda?
There's other things in the closed session that we have got to take care of, Mr. Singletary, tonight. One of them I read in the opening statement, dealing with the lawsuit. Any further discussion?
As I understand it, Mr. Chairman, the motion before the board at this point is to, a motion to go back and.
Amend the policy. Correct. To amend.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry.
I think, Mr. Grady, what our motion is, if I've got it correct, is to amend the policy as stated as you had read to us, and to go back into open session to hold another vote to go in the closed session. Is that correct?
Well, it would be to go back into open session for the purpose of hearing the motion to amend, and then there'll be another vote to go back into closed session. Sorry.
I know that Mr. Chris and Mr. Benton both amended that, Mr. Gary, and we were in discussion on that.
Right, right. I just, go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I just think you need to have a motion to go back into closed, into open session and to approve.
The policy.
And basically, a motion to suspend the policy relating to advanced delivery of materials.
Okay.
And then, then after that.
Excuse me. Mr. Carroll.
Yes, sir.
Did anybody answer Mr. Singletary's question?
I thought I did, Mr. Rota.
What was this question that, that why, why would we want to do that when we haven't had time to, to study this information?
Uh, dealing with the, the other.
I, I got my, I, I checked my stuff yesterday also, and, and I received it today.
Well, let's do this before, before we go anywhere. We've got to come back into open session. We've got to come back into open session first, if, if I'm being led right by, by what I'm understanding. I need a motion at this time, and I think Mr. Chris and Mr. Benton, to come back into closed session, into open session. Is that correct, Mr. Gary?
That's correct.
I need a motion and a second to come back into open session. I have a motion by Mr. Chris Clark to come back into open session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Was that Al, Mr. Allen West? Any further discussion? If not, I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
As I call your name, board members, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark. Dennis Edwards. Tim Benton. Gary Rhoda. Vincent Rosier. Corey Single Terry. Alan West. Glenn McCoy. Roger Carroll. Mr. Chairman, you have nine yeses.
Thank you very much. Now at this time, I, I need to entertain a motion to set aside policy to be able to go into closed session. Is that correct, Mr. Grady?
That, that is, that is correct. To set aside the policy as it relates to advancement, delivery of materials.
To set aside policy to advance the delivery of material.
And, and you, I think you can do that, and you need to pass that, and then you'll need to have a motion to go into closed session if it passes.
Correct. I need a motion to, to set this policy aside for tonight. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion to set the policy aside by Mr. Chris Clark. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Tim Benton to set the policy aside. Any discussion? If not, I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
As I call your name, board members, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark. Dennis Edwards.
Nay.
Tim Benton. Gary Rhoda.
Nay.
Vincent Rosier. Corey Single Terry.
Nay.
Alan West. Glenn McCoy. Roger Carroll. Mr. Chairman, you have five yeses and three noes.
Thank you very much. At this time, I need to have a motion to go into closed session.
So moved. Second.
I have a mo, motion by Mr. Tim Benton and a second by Mr. Chris Clark.
Roger. I, I thought you said you had to have a unanimous decision to do that.
No, you already voted.
Majority, majority.
And, and I presume that the motion to go in the closed session would be for the purposes previously stated?
Correct. Do I need to read that again?
I think as long as you say with the, for the purposes previously stated, that'll be fine.
Okay. I need a motion to go in the closed session. Mr. Benton, would you amend your motion as previously stated?
So the motion is to go into closed session for the purposes previously stated. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Motion.
I have that motion by Mr. Tim and a second by Mr. Chris. Any other discussion? I yield to you, Ms. Valerie.
As I call your name, board members, please indicate your vote. Chris Clark. Dennis Edwards. Tim Benton. Gary Rhoda.
Nay.
Vincent Rosier. Corey Single Terry.
Nay.
Alan West. Glenn McCoy. Roger Carroll. Mr. Chairman, you have five yeses and three noes. I'm sorry. Six yeses and three noes.
Six yeses.
Yes, four, six yeses and three noes.
Thank you. At this time, if you would please sign out and please sign into closed session.